Oh, man. What is the long reason of the indication, please?
Lord, we just like to thank you for the opportunity to get together. We thank you for the cooler temperatures and a little bit of rain. Lord, we just ask you to bless us and bless this whole community, city and county. Lord, we just asked you for so many favors in your name. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Councilor, copy the agenda. We're going to have a motion. Motion approved the agenda. Second discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. Thank you, Councilor.
Minutes of the September 9th, 2019, regular meeting, September 16th, 2019, special call meeting, and the September 30th, public hearing. Please.
Regular council meeting, Monday, September 9th, 2019. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Lottie Waters give the indication. He called on Councilmember Ensign Navy to lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver called on City Clerk Lisa Hall to read the minutes of the August 5th, 2019, regular meeting. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to accept the minutes as read. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver asked that it be noted that Councilmembers Tony Fountain and Kurt Raffield were absent from the meeting. He also recognized Mayor-elect Steve Lawrence, Councilmember-elect Jim Loney, and Councilmember John Faust's son, Postman, in the upcoming election. Mayor Weaver called on City Clerk Lisa Hall to read the minutes of the August 7th, 2019, public meeting. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve that the August 7th, 2019, public meeting be accepted into this meeting as an attachment. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item A to Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Attorney Bill Pickett and Mr. Douglas to update the council on the subletting of city property. Mr. Douglas stated that he had met with a JYSI representative whereby it was discussed bringing the use of the ball fields back under the umbrella of the city. He stated JYSI had asked that if the city took back control of the ball fields that JYSI wanted some type of compensation for the equipment that had been purchased. He then asked Bill Pickett to voice his concerns. Mr. Pickett stated that the city should not allow JYSI to lease the fields to travel in baseball teams because that would exclude all of the taxpaying citizens. Mr. Douglas stated that JYSI had admitted that they had received in-kind donations as well as mandatory contributions for use of the fields. Mayor Weaver stated that it was his understanding that they were renting the fields for a set fee. Councilmember Sonny Proctor stated that he would like to explore having a policy for the public's use of the city's public facilities. Mayor Weaver stated that what concerns him is that JYSI is charging for the use of the fields, which creates liability for the city. More discussion followed. Councilmember John Faust stated that JYSI had never rented the fields. Mayor Weaver stated that he has seen copies of checks written to JYSI for rental. More discussion followed. Councilmember Ensign Navy stated that she would like to see some type of user agreement for all city facilities that would protect the city. Mr. Douglas said that he would bring to council such type of agreement. Councilmember Proctor stated that he would like for Mr. Douglas to explore the possible renting of the city's facilities and how this would affect the city's liability. Mayor Weaver stated that it was his recommendation that the city not allow leasing of the facilities. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to table this item again. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item B to Old Business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present the service delivery area map amendment for the changes approved in the July council meeting. Mr. Douglas stated that the required forms had been submitted and that he was waiting on the regional commission to amend the map. Once the map was received from the commission, there was a 30-day mandatory review by the DCA. Mayor Weaver stated that, for the record, the city's claiming what is rightfully their service delivery area, the Coquelin property, which by law, since it has been annexed into the corporate city limits, is the city's service delivery area. He stated that the city is giving the county a portion of the city's area that the city does not desire service. Mayor Weaver stated that this would be kept on old business until Mr. Douglas can bring the map to council. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to table this item until council receives the map. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C to Old Business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present to council an update on the zoning issue at Mountain City Business Park. He stated that staff had met with Wright Bill Beck and that he is proposing the city to offer a special land use permit. He stated that this permit allows for certain uses within a zoning district to be considered by the elected body, thereby providing an applicant that has a property or business in an area whereupon a use may not be permitted by right use, but it may be a compatible use with other surrounding businesses and could be considered. Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Delbeck to discuss lending issues with the current uses of zoning of his properties. Discussion with council followed. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to request staff incorporate special land use permit into the city's zoning ordinances. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D to Old Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to discuss stormwater issues on Connel Street. Mr. Douglas stated that he did not have clarification on the easement document that was provided by Terry New at last month's meeting. He stated that staff had identified an old roadbed that appears to be the city's right-of-way, and he has begun putting measures in place to mitigate the excess water running off property from behind the houses located at Stafford Manor and Dogwood. He stated that he is asking permission from council to also put pedestals in the grates of two of the storm bearings to keep them from clogging up at a cost of less than $5,000. He stated that SPOSS money could be utilized. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve up to $5,000 from SPOSS revenue to repair stormwater rates on Connel Street. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, Terry New requested to be recognized. He stated that he had damages inside and outside his home due to the city's easement that he would like to be addressed. Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Pickett, who stated that Mr. New needed to turn in the damages to City Hall. He then asked that he be provided a letter from the city with everyone's signature that the city does have rights to the easement. Mayor Weaver stated that he would basically have to sue the city in order for the city to take that responsibility. He also stated that his damages will be turned over to the city's insurance. At this time, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to recess for five minutes. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made such motion. Following the break, Mayor Weaver called the meeting back to order. Item A to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Robert Keller to give an update on doors being repaved. Mr. Keller presented council handouts as well as slides and video demonstrating the improvements that have been made to the park. The improvements include gates, signage, chimneys, wood furlongs, towers, and dog stations. Councilmember John Faust thanked Mr. Keller for all his time and hard work that he has put into the park. Item B to New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present information regarding the Marble Festival. Mr. Douglas stated that the festival is scheduled for Saturday, October 5th through 6th at Leaning Park. He said that the Pickens County Chamber of Commerce is requesting approval for a special event alcohol permit for October 5th to prevent the sale of beer and wine at the festival. He stated that the sales of alcohol will be confined to the section of the parking lot that Beckham Memorial Park, side of the park. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to approve the special event beer and wine permit. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item C to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present a request from Pickens County Arts and Cultural Alliance to close a section of DB Carroll Street from Mark Whitfield Street for their annual cornbread reunion. He stated that the intersection of Whitfield and DB Carroll would remain open. He stated that the closure would be from Friday, October 11th at 5:00 p.m. until Saturday, October 12th until 6:00 p.m. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to approve the closing. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item D to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to advise council that Leaning Park had been reserved for the Freedom Walk event to be held September 20th and 21st. He stated that this would not require city services as the event is contained completely within the park. He stated that this item was just an FYI for council and mayor. Item E to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present to council the second annual tour of homes event. He stated that this would be held along South Main Street on Saturday, December 7th from 12:30 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. He stated that the only assistance from the city would be a police officer to allow attendees to cross South Main with a temporary stopping of traffic. He stated that this is the same day as the Jasper Merchants Association Christmas Parade, but there should be no conflict due to the timeframe. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the tour of homes event. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item F to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present the change order request for the SPOSS paving contract awarded to Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated at last month's regular meetings. He stated that the contractor had identified the need for deep patching on Noah Drive, Bill Williamson Parkway, Bryant Street, and Sunnet Street. He is requesting that council approve the change order in addition to the original bid of $1,217,062.50 for the use of SPOSS funds up to $60,000 for the deep patching. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion for the additional cost of $60,000 to staff to oversee the additional expenditure. Mayor Weaver stated he would like pictures of the deep patching work so that council could see where the $60,000 was spent. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the use of $60,000 SPOSS money in addition to the original bid to make the repairs to the existing paving. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item G to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to present a change order request on the painting of the water tank approved earlier in the year. Mr. Douglas stated that it had been determined by the city's engineer along with the paint supplier that a primer would not be necessary as the paint contractor had communicated earlier in the month, no action necessary. Item H to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to request authorization to purchase materials for the second phase and continuation of the Grandview Waterline project. He presented the following quotes. Calvin Meter Company, $27,055.20. Ford and Lonne Water Works, $28,034.94. Corne Man, $28,372.50. Mr. Douglas stated that he and David had looked at the apparent low bid of Calvin Meter Company, and it appears that it has met all the specifications. He stated the reason that this phase was a bit more costly than the first phase was because additional materials were required in order to cross the creek. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the purchase of the materials from Calvin Meter Company at the low bid of $27,055.20 for the continuation of the Grandview Waterline project. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item I to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas and water sewer superintendent David Hall to present possible leachate negotiations. Mr. Hall stated that Pine Bluff Waste Management recently purchased Eagle Point. He said that Pine Bluff wants to use the city's sewer plant as backup for its leachate. He stated Pine Bluff is currently using LJ Sewer Plant for leachate. He stated that they would agree to the same agreement as the city currently has with Eagle Point. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to allow staff to continue negotiations with Pine Bluff Waste Management and to bring back to council a contract between the city and the company for the city's processing of leachate. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item J to New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present the city's group health insurance renewal. Mr. Douglas stated that the city's cost increase was 2.95% under the existing plan. He stated that if the city absorbed the employee increase, it would cost the city approximately $4,700. He stated that it was staff's recommendation that the city absorb the employee increase. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Douglas to state the increase in dollars. Mr. Douglas stated the renewal premium would be $1,146,474 annually compared to the current premium of $1,113,601 for a total increase of $32,873, of which approximately $4,700 was the city's absorption of the employees' increase. Mayor Weaver called for a vote. Motion carried unanimously. Item K to New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Douglas to present information regarding the city's defined benefit retirement plan. Mr. Douglas stated that the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System had advised that the city was required to restate the plan. He stated that last spring he had explored modifications to the plan. He stated that since the plan was bigger stated, he is asking that council consider some or all of the options that he had researched. He stated that he was proposing options such as the rule of eighty, changing the calculation rate to a flat one and a half percent, add military service, and increase minimum weekly hours worked from 20 to 30 hours. He stated that our current plan is almost funded at 98%. He stated that the current annual cost to the city is $137,295, and if these changes were implemented, there would be an additional annual cost to the city of $123,845. He stated that he is asking for direction on how to proceed. He stated that the city is required to have a restated or modified plan to GMA by the end of this year. He stated that if the city made the modification to the plan, the plan would go from 98% funded to 79% funded. He stated that the advantage of the eighty and out modification was to make the city more competitive in the marketplace for recruitment of employees. He stated that he would recommend removing the in-service option that we have now so that when an employee decided to draw a retirement, they could no longer work for the city. More discussion followed. Mayor Weaver appointed council members Ensign Navy and Sonny Proctor to be on a committee to look into the modifications, costs, and state requirements for funding. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to ask for a modified version of plan so the council can compare to the existing retirement plan. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Carried unanimously. Item M to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas and Lisa Hall to give an update on the preparation of the 2020 budget. Mr. Douglas stated that he and Lisa Hall have met with most of the department heads last week and are getting prepared to present the preliminary budget to the budgetary committee. Item N under New Business, Mr. Douglas stated we are still waiting on the city's consolidated tax digest from the county. He stated that an military rollback could not be calculated until the digest was received. Mr. Douglas stated that council would have to have a special authority to approve the military advertisement. Mayor Weaver asked that Mr. Douglas go to the Tax Commissioner's office to request the digest. Mayor Weaver stated this item will be tabled until the digest is available. Item N to New Business, Mayor Weaver called on Lisa Hall to present an application for ditch water sewer rates. While in review, Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the application. Councilmember Ensign Navy seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item O to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to ask for council's approval of street dedication of Mountain City Drive. Mr. Douglas stated that all of Mountain City Drive is dedicated and being built, but the city staff does not have a record or of an official accepting of the street. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to accept Mountain City Drive into the city. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Item P to New Business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Douglas to ask for council approval of street dedication to Philadelphia Lane. Mr. Douglas stated that all of Philadelphia Lane was dedicated and being built because the city staff does not have an official accepting of the street. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to accept Philadelphia Lane into the city. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver asked for committee updates. Councilmember Proctor gave an update on the Economic Devolver Hiring Committee and the Perel Roper Pool Property Development Committee. Mr. Douglas gave an update on the Cost of Construction Committee. He stated that the director of the mayor, he had been working with David Hall, turned up seed engineers and the developer of the property, approximately 30 acres located south of the racetrack off 515 on by Gary Coquelin and Scott McConner, which was resigned as a planned unit of development last June. He stated that the goal was to determine what it would cost to get water and sewer to that area, which is being developed as single-family detached homes up to 180 units. He stated that the goal was to determine, in the instance that the entire corridor from Harmony Road to the Coquelin property was developed out, what it would mean to the city's water and sewer system. He stated that there are five lift stations, A through E, and according to the engineer, there are approximately 500 acres that could be built out, 31 of which is the PUD mentioned earlier. He presented to council two cost estimates. One, to get water and sewer to the property, $1,060,000, and two, future necessary upgrades to pump stations, A, B, and E, $246,000. He stated that staff did not believe that the cost would be as expensive as the city would do a lot of the work. The estimates presented were as if the city totally contracted the project out. He recommended to council that the city partner with the developer so as to bring water and sewer to the area for future development. He stated the developer would provide a cash payment in the amount of $300,000 and approximately $150,000 in kind labor that the city would normally incur. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to partner with the owners and developer in order to provide water and sewer services to the area by accepting $300,000 in cash and $150,000 in kind labor. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave the financial report for the month of August 2019. Lottie Waters gave a report of Rosen Streets. Chief Steve Roper read Chief Greg Lowells, who was absent, a report of police activities for the month of August 2019. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of August 2019. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver adjourned the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at a special, at the special call meeting to be held September 16th, 2019.
Entertained a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes as read. Second. Motion is second. Discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. And Tony, you were not here, and Kirk was not here. It'll be three to four. Okay, September 16th, 2019, special call meeting?
Call council meeting Monday, September 16th, 2019. Mayor Proctor and Faust called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Jim Loney give the indication. He requested Councilmember Steve Lawrence lead the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Proctor and Faust asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. It is noted that Mayor Weaver and Councilmember Kurt Raffield were absent from the meeting. Item A to Old Business, Mayor Proctor and Faust recognized City Manager Brandon Douglas to present the military arrangement for council approval. Mr. Douglas stated that he is proposing not to roll back the military. He stated that if council decided to leave the rate the same, it would necessitate three public hearings in order to inform the citizens the effects of an unchanged military. He provided council with the history of the city's military back to 1999, as well as the schedule of current versus previous title act of the law and tax revenues collected. He stated that the city has had a significant revenue decrease in the state TAVT and would need additional property taxes to offset those revenues. Councilmember Sonny Proctor clarified that leaving the military the same as at 4.655 mils versus the rollback rate of 4.536 mils would amount to $11.90 on every $100,000 value of property. Mr. Douglas stated that if the city advertised the rollback rate, then by law, it could not adopt the present military, but it could decide to adopt the rollback rate because the city cannot advertise the lower rate than adopted. Discussion followed. Mayor Proctor and Faust entertained a motion that council authorized and approved the staff to take the necessary steps to advertise the city's Jasper's military to be in change from last year, which is 4.655 mils. Councilmember Ensign Navy made such motion. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Proctor and Faust entertained a motion to advertise for a special call meeting to be held September 30th, 2019, for the first of three public hearings in order to adopt the military. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made such motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Proctor and Faust entertained a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the public hearing to be held September 30th, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes as read.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Motion to approve. Second. Second discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. Kirk was not here, and I was not. Okay, the September 30th public hearing, okay, minutes?
Public hearing Monday, September 30th, 6:00 p.m. Mayor Weaver called the meeting promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested Jim Loney give the indication. Councilmember John Faust led in her side of the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved. Councilmember Ensign Navy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Kurt Raffield seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Brandon Douglas. Mr. Douglas stated that this is the first of three required public hearings. He stated that if the city does not advertise the recommended rollback military that the state requires for public hearings, he stated that the next public hearing will be October 7th at 9:00 a.m., and the third public hearing will be October 7th at 5:30 p.m. He stated that the current military is 4.655, and that it was his recommendation to maintain this rate. He stated, following the third public hearing, that council could adopt the military at the October 7th regular meeting. He presented council with some sample properties from the tax digest to compare tax differences. He stated that if the county's assessed value did not increase, then there would be no tax increase on that property. He stated that the city was not raising taxes across the board, but if the property's assessed value went up, then more taxes will be due. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Douglas to explain to the public why he felt the city should not roll back the military to recommend about the state. Mr. Douglas stated that due to the state changing the TAVT for auto sales, the city went from receiving approximately $24,000 to $30,000, and went from receiving approximately $5,000 per month. He stated that this was a significant impact to the city's 2020 budget. He stated that by not rolling back the military, the additional taxes would help offset this reduction in funds. Mayor Weaver asked if the city had annexed any properties this year. Mayor Weaver stated that he was able to increase tax revenue throughout his years in office through expanding the city through annexations, which increased the tax digest tremendously. He stated in the future, annexation may be the city's salvation is to not raise taxes. Mayor Weaver opened the floor to comments and questions regarding the proposed 2019 military. There were no public comments. Councilmember Kurt Raffield made a motion to adjourn. Mayor Weaver adjourned the hearing. Council is scheduled to convene next at the public hearings and regular meeting on November 7th, 2019.
Entertained a motion?
Motion approved as read.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. unanimous. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, under Old Business, subletting of city property. It appeared Mr. Pickett is not here this evening. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Mayor, Council, public, as the minutes reflected from last meeting, directed staff to look into user agreement. Unfortunately, I have not arranged for that to be drafted thus far, so I have no updates to provide at this meeting. So, actually, no action?
Yes, sir. Questions, Council? We entertain a motion to table this item until Mr. Douglas has the information available?
I make the law should we table the subletting of city property until Mr. Douglas can come before city council next meeting?
Second. Motion is second. Discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. Item B, service delivery area map amendment update.
Yes, sir. We are scheduled, hopefully, this month to be on the regional commission's radar to come see us, and I've been trying to get the map so that we can submit the forms 1, 2, and 4, along with the map, so then that way you all can essentially sign off and give it to DCA. DCA can then do a 30-day review and kind of complete this. So, at this moment, I have no map to provide you all.
Entertained a motion to table until the map is available?
Salute.
Got a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. Unanimous. Thank you. Item C, Mountain City, Mountain Business Park zoning update. Brandon?
Yes, sir. As directed, staff moved forward with placing and advertisement for the planning zoning commission to meet. We put it in the following week's paper, and as such, we're scheduled to have the meeting tomorrow on the 8th, but that has been rescheduled to the 15th. However, that still isn't time to have the meeting and then come back to you all with the special land use permit, the recommendation to be incorporated to the zoning ordinance which also will be in the meeting.
Entertained a motion to table until planning commission has an opportunity to meet? Got a motion? Motion is second. Discussion. Ben Alferro, show hands. Unanimous. Stormwater Elizabeth Street update. Brandon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, we have essentially had Elizabeth Street handled and taken care of. City staff concerted with Fast House, completed all the work. The only thing left to remain is to have Moss Paving come, and I think within the next week or two, they're going to come and pave the section of the road that had been dug out with the new culvert and head walls put in. If you drive through there, it has been open for a couple of weeks. If you do notice, the shoulder is a little narrow, so we are going to install some guardrails along the section of the roadway, but by and large, it is complete. I've not heard of any concerns, and it was a good project, and I appreciate you all allowing us to, and your patience, and allowing us to move forward and get it done.
I recall that $5,000 expenditure available to you for that operation?
That one, that was the Conell. This one was up to twenty in Sploes. There was about ninety-nine hundred spent in Sploes, but with the paving, there will be probably five thousand or less.
Probably about that much, yes.
So, we do have, at this moment, I don't think I need to request altering that original number on Sploes.
Okay, you contracted with moss paving?
They've been contacting, come out and looked at the project and said they would get it as quick as possible.
Okay, they didn't require a bid or anything? How much would a law department cost?
It should be less than five, no more than, he did the patching over there on Camp Ray before, and that was less than five, that pretty deep, deep patch extensive area. If it's, if it's beyond five, then I'm going to request somebody else give us a quote because we have up to roughly ten thousand more in Sploes allowance, but my expectation would be that the paving aspect should not exceed five.
Sure it won't. Okay. So, that basically brings me into item D. Item E, millage rate adoption, Brandon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, we have concluded at five thirty this evening, the third public hearing, two of which was before the elected body, one of which was held administratively here this morning by staff. I am not aware of any public comments at those meetings or any sort of correspondence to us. As such, I would like to just point out again, Mayor, for the record, that part of the staff's concern in terms of when we get into the budget is we will have a significant reduction in our revenue from the TAVT, which is a state distribution of cataloged warrant taxes. We are projected to have an excess of two hundred and forty thousand less in fiscal year twenty twenty, so I think it would be prudent for us to at least maintain our current millage rate that would garner about twenty-nine, thirty thousand in extra revenue from the tax digest, and that would be at the four point six five five rate.
Four point six five five?
Yes, sir.
You're recommending four point six five five. Would you entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the millage rate at four point six five five.
Second?
Second.
And motion second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. unanimous. Twenty twenty budget update, Brandon?
And I believe, Mr. Mayor, council, we may be able to distribute to you all the calendar Lisa put together. Kurt and I talked, and I think we have on the docket proposed preliminary budget finance committee meeting on this Wednesday at, I believe, six P.M. is what we've historically done. And I will, I will just say preliminarily for y'all's record, the previous comment about the reduction of revenue, it has necessitated us to stop early to essentially give y'all a budget that is going to have hardly any capital expenditures at all. I don't believe in providing you all with a lot of excess budgetary items of vehicles or large capital items. We communicated, Lisa and I, with the departments to express to them the lack of revenue getting from, have known a lack of revenue. So, as we go into the budgetary process, Mr. Mayor, I just want to go ahead and fully disclose that there will be a significant difference in this year's proposed budget versus previous years. But with that, I don't have any further updates, Lisa.
Any questions, council? Been none. Item G, Lee J proposed contract, Brandon Davis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, good news is Lisa Davis and I were able to meet with representatives from Waste Management last week, and that is the entity that was over time block, and as brought to y'all last month, there was a strong desire from them to utilize our facility. They have verbally and written basically said they have no issues with the existing contract that we have been utilizing with all the terms for Eagle Point landfill. So, in the packets, you'll have the Eagle Point landfill agreement as well as a separate blank agreement that will be proposed for the waste management of Metro Atlanta Inc. And I haven't been with Lisa or David, if you have anything, I think it was well received. They were basically nonobjection giving points on the contract.
In your meeting, may I, are they, want to bring more from Time Block?
Yes.
Do they want to do that?
Yeah, hopefully, could be as much as make an extra quarter next year, so.
That'd be a considerable amount of income.
Yes.
Okay.
And we need you to sign.
Do you agree?
Yeah.
Would you entertain a motion to approve the agreement as proposed by Brandon?
Some of it.
A motion?
Second.
A motion, second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. unanimous, you want me to do that now?
I don't know if anybody wants to start tomorrow.
I guess they all want to break the next one. Are they still going to be?
Do you have another copy?
You got a copy of the contract?
Oh, y'all don't have that?
Well, I think it's.
Mine's got a, a pin on the back.
I've got one in my book.
Give me one that we can give them, and that way we'll have it done. Thank you. I can, I can do it after the meeting, please.
Yeah, because I did this double sign it, so it's a memo.
We'll, we'll clean it up, and I'll sign that for you.
I'm sorry.
I'll write it for you in the morning.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start hollering, God bless.
You want a memo for the long-term record? Okay, item H, alcohol referendum approval of resolution, Brandon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, you may recall earlier this year, there was direction for staff to move forward with presenting the language off of a resolution to give to the county's elections office in order to put it on the ballot. That was done, however, from a, I guess, clerical and or just to solidify, they wanted the actual resolution in its entirety completed. Lisa and I talked, and just to dot our i's and cross our t's, wanted to make sure that y'all had a copy of the resolution wherein the actual language on the ballot was read and approved. So, procedurally, just so we can give them the resolution.
If you, if you just read the.
Yes, sir.
The, what's going to be on the ballot, I think council would appreciate it.
All the where it has this and now therefore's, the ballot to be used in the election shall have written or printed thereon the following words, parenthetical, yes, shall the governing authority of the city of Jasper, Georgia be authorized to permit and regulate some sales of distilled spirits or alcohol beverages for beverage purposes by the drink from eleven A.M. to twelve thirty P.M.? Parenthetical, no, underneath, shall the governing authority of the city of Jasper, Georgia be authorized to permit and regulate some sales of distilled spirits or alcohol beverages for beverage purposes by the drink from eleven A.M. to twelve thirty P.M.? And beyond that, that's.
Is that what's going to be on the ballot?
Yes, sir.
Would you entertain a motion to approve the resolution, basically, how final housekeeping for the referendum?
Certainly.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. Thank you, council. Under new business, we have with us tonight a guest, Dale, if you would like to come forward, Ryner University Shamrock Scroll point five request for road closure and special event alcohol license.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank y'all. Our upcoming Shamrock Scroll point five K is scheduled, we hope for March fourteenth in downtown Jasper, and this will be our third annual event to raise funds for Higgins County students at Tennyson Park. So, we're hoping to have our event again, March fourteenth, and close the road. We're right now working on the route. We're looking at starting in the wood bridge end parking lot and coming across the bridge. We just think it'll be a little more flavor coming across downtown and coming to the end of Main Street there at sixty-one Main, and having it closed between sixty of one Main there and fifty-three, like we did last year.
Very short amount of time.
Yeah, we closed about two, so we could set up and get everything going, and then it ran till about seven. Our event's usually five to eight, but it got a little cool last year, so we.
You closed fifty-three or just blocked traffic?
We only blocked traffic so the walkers or runners could come down.
And the other street that's going to close for a period of time?
Is just there from fifty-three to next to sixty-one Main.
That makes sense. Same thing as for as the long table?
Yes.
Entertained a motion to approve the request?
Certainly.
Got a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Motion second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. Thank you, council. Something else you want to add?
For the beer permit.
Oh, yes, that's one of the, yeah, well, continuation thereof.
Do we need to apply for that, or?
Brandon?
What we would typically do, there's a section alcohol ordinance that allows for special events permit, which is just for one day only. So, what they would be doing is if y'all authorize that, staff has a form that we will then have them execute that they can then take to their vendor, I believe y'all use.
We've used Reclamation Brewery in the past. We're working on the finalization and confirmation of that.
Entertained a motion for the special, been a license?
Certainly.
A motion?
Second.
Second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. Thank you, council. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you very much.
Seems like just yesterday.
I know it, I know it. We'll see you all at the Shamrock Scroll.
It's a great event.
Item B, Higgins County Library Board appointment. I, council, was requested by Ms. Ann Roper to appoint Marcia, and I see no reason why she would not do a good job, because she has replaced Ms. Bobby Edge, who's retired, from the board. Marcia's a nice lady, lives in Jasper, Georgia. Would you entertain a motion?
Make a motion and allow Marcia McDonald.
McDaniel.
McDaniel to replace Bobby Edge on the Higgins County Library Board.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, charged. Discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. unanimous. Approval of city two thousand nineteen property tax exemptions currently home state exemption are three thousand and four thousand for sixty-five and older. Lisa?
We're just asking, it's our recommendations to keep them the same, and we have to have council approve them every year.
This has been standard exemption. Would you entertain a motion?
Certainly.
A motion to approve the exemptions?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. unanimous. See auditor continuation, two thousand nineteen financial audit, Brandon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, Lisa and I have spoken, and I asked her, or actually, she and I have spoken, and for full disclosure, staff is putting before you a recommendation from Rushton and Company LLC. I will say that in regards to this company, I have, I have no longstanding history, however, I do have the history with auditors and auditing firms, and there is an element of comfort having an auditor onboard with organization. Ultimately, if y'all want to continue that, I think historically, we would ask for a different partner, and I think they are on a rotating basis. The proposal they have provided us is more than last year, however, it is less than a couple of surrounding communities, so I would like to just point out to council that staff will take whatever direction in terms of if y'all want to go out for a request for proposals, we can certainly do that.
Do you have the amount?
Yes, the amount, they have committed to holding twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one.
Say that again, I was talking.
They have requested, or they have provided us a quote for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. If there's a single audit required, which is, let me butcher it, if you meet a certain criteria in grants, you have to do a single audit, it's all audit, that would be five thousand dollars. Surrounding communities.
What did we pay this year?
Seventeen thousand, two hundred ninety, I believe.
That's right.
And I will say that Blue Ridge has a smaller budget there, I don't know who they use, but they spend about twenty-five thousand, five hundred. Canton obviously has a sizable budget there, it's thirty-one thousand, six eighty. I will say that if y'all want us to go out for RFPs, we will. I just want to confirm with Lisa that it would not provide any significant impediments with the process, if this is early enough to go out for RFPs, or we would just want to commit for one more year instead of anything, we're just, if they direct, if council directs us to go out for RFPs, there would be a thirty day where we have to get it going, it would be end of year before we.
What would your recommendation?
I'm fine with keeping them, but I think one year, I don't necessarily want to give the expectations that it will be a multi-year, but now that we're in the budget process.
How many years have they done it? Thirteen, two thousand thirteen was the first year we used them.
And there is nothing to stop them from bidding, and the last organization I was with, we kept an auditing firm for ten years. Full disclosure, we said we're just going to put it back out on the street, keep fresh. They want it, but it was higher than what we originally got from them, so that's why I say that to you all, that I do not know what to expect.
So, they buy about a five thousand dollar increase, a little bit more, but they have kept it low for us for years.
Yeah, the last, they did a three-year deal when it was seventeen thousand, two ninety for the last three years.
And they worked well with the staff?
I really liked the scheduling. We've never been late, and they work well with the staff, and that's not frozen with them.
Okay, would you entertain a motion?
Mayor, I might?
Yes.
Could I ask what your recommendation would be? Lisa, you're really the important one here. Where's your input?
I would recommend that we stay with them, like Brandon said, at least one more year. I don't, I don't think we've ever really committed to the three-year term anyway. We've.
We hit two first.
They've offered it three, but.
Yeah, we only give them one year.
Yeah, we still get it approved every year, though.
Yeah, I think we discussed that last time, the three.
Flip motion.
Make a motion, we accept the Russian amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty for budget year two thousand nineteen.
A motion to accept the recommendation from, I'm going to call it a recommendation from your friend, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars a year for Rushton and Company? Is second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. unanimous. Alcohol license for request for approval, change in registered agent, Brandon?
And I believe in your packets, you've got, the background sheet essentially states that Ingles Market is requesting to change managers, and all the requirements have been met, and every application is in top order.
Entertained a motion to approve the registered agent request, change, change request?
Certainly.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Been on all fair but with your hands. Thank you, council. Alcohol license request for renewal. Who might that be? Item L.
I think, Mr. Mayor, Lisa and I have spoken, and we have started getting some of the license holders in for the renewals, so rather than just to put it all on just one agenda end of the year, I think as we get them, we'll get you a list of October, November, December for following twenty twenty. So, right now, we've got, you want to read the ones we've got thus far for the renewals?
Yes.
Okay. We've got sixty-one Main Inc., I Love New York Pizza, Ingles, Main Stock Market, Pogies Oil, Beacon Garden. Oil, Peaking Garden, Platinum Mountain U.S. Citgo, Race Track Petroleum License, Rocco's Pub, and Walmart.
You want all those approved? Need a motion to approve those that have applied? An emotion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, what was your hands? Thank you, council. Item G, pavement stripe and expenditure request for approval. Brandon, Lonnie?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council. I believe Lonnie's going to come up here to, he's got a lot of institutional knowledge. You'll notice, obviously, that this is being requested for approval after the fact. In your sheet, you'll notice an invoice of nearly twenty-two thousand. It's twenty-one thousand eight fifty ninety-five. I believe historically, when we do renovations, we try to get the markings on the pavement as quickly as possible. I think the, of the two vendors, one of the vendors had a four to six week lead time. This vendor had a few days, so staff went ahead and commissioned them to get the stripes on the road from a safety perspective right then.
Twenty-two thousand?
It was, the amount was twenty-one thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and ninety-five cents.
And what was, were we waiting four weeks or whatever? Was that the good price for them?
They didn't ever give me a price as far as the total price, but it was like, you know, a few cents, or like twenty-two cents or something, but so the other one was like twenty-two point one or something like that.
They were in the ballpark.
Yeah, they were practically the same price, but the issue was, like we've always done, is contracted the one that could get here quicker, and it was with a replica company we used.
It wasn't.
Parker.
Parker. The other one's Peak. Peak. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the expenditure of twenty-one thousand eight hundred?
Eight hundred fifty dollars and ninety-five cents.
Whatever Ann said. We entertain a motion?
Second.
I'm going to take Ann's motion, since she gave me the price. Second. Got a motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, what was your hands? That's unanimous, thank you, guys. Paying Project Bid item H, Paying Project Bid for Second Phase two thousand nineteen. Brandon?
Yes, sir, Lonnie Bell on it.
He's going back.
Give him a license.
Okay, we put the final streets up for bid to be resurfaced once this is completed. Thanks to the splice that we did six years ago, or five and a half years ago, we will have every street, asphalt street in the city resurfaced in five and a half years. We opened the bid package today. Johnson paving was three hundred and twelve dollars, eight hundred and fifty, three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Bardo paving was three hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents. Northwest Georgia was three hundred sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. CW Matthews was three hundred ninety-four thousand, thirty-seven dollars and forty-five cents. So the apparent low bid is with Johnson paving for three hundred and twelve, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
And Kay, do you have a list of those streets remaining?
I can probably name them.
Give us all the camera, if you will.
Okay, it'd be Interstate South, that is a racetrack, Chevy Lane up behind Saget.
Are you going to be able to extend that out like they've been asking?
The developer has told me that he would be talking to the paving crew who we were got to bid package.
And then we offered that years ago to John, I haven't given the package.
They were on Blue Ridge.
Embarrassing. But anyway, since you can do that, because we promised them when they moved in there that that would be extended.
And they, they're working with the DOT on the exit of one oh eight first. They're still talking to them about that. They're going to try to have everything ready by the time the paving crews move in.
They're going to try to do it around?
Yeah, I don't know what to do.
They just see that about sixty feet continued on which is city street. Before we used a dump bleach.
But Chevy Lane, behind Saget, Mountain Side Village, there are Rocco's. We're going to be doing a section of Hidden Creek on each end, that's all city. And I think that's about it. I mean, it totals about three and a half miles, something like that. So we're going to have total, once that's completed, we're going, in five and a half years, we resurface about fifty-two miles of streets inside the city of Jasper.
Good deal. Entertained a motion to approve the Johnson paving of three hundred twelve thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars, low bid?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. If I could, just to, Lisa and Lonnie and I talked after the bid, there's always this unknown subsurface, and I didn't want to be in a situation like we were last time, where we told the contractor to hold off on the deep patching. I'd like to ask if y'all would consider giving us a not-to-exceed. I don't know if Lonnie was going to say it in Hidden Ford or Mayor or the company now. We did have a favorable return on the deep patching. We didn't.
Yeah, I saw the pictures of those.
We didn't quite get close to the sixty thousand. I think we're around thirty-two.
I was going to say that. I had to say sixty thousand.
About half.
So what I'd like to do is, they've not asked, but just between now.
Have you looked at the road? Do you see any particular areas?
There's going to be very little. There could be something that, I mean, a small amount, that they would say, you know, this needs to be repaired, but it's going to be very little.
I think you can ask for the council permission to use your expertise to determine whether it's fair or not, and then bring that, what you come up with to the council for our understanding. I think would be the best way. Entertained a motion to approve Brandon's request.
Make a motion to approve the amount up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, what was your hands? Thank you, council. Thank you, guys. It's hard to do that in between, I understand, Mark.
Did you, did we?
I, that was it.
The only other thing, I know historically, we've always done the markings afterwards, and I'm comfortable with continuing to do that, the markings.
Is there any way you can get a, well, we don't really have time, I think you can do it this fall. You're going to be in the same predicament that you are this time. Is it the summer or anything?
I'm hoping, Mr. Mayor, that we can get them mobilized to get going and get them complete by.
So you, did you, have you asked anybody from the striping, both those companies, to give you a price in the time front?
Not on this bid package, no.
You might need to do that. We won't have another meeting until you, they might be paying.
Yeah.
So we hope to have a meeting, we, actually, we'll have a call meeting. We've got budget meetings, prove the, prove the, what we got coming at.
Not until November, we'll be having our budget meetings.
Okay. Maybe a little bit, but you don't want to come back to the council with your hat in your hand.
Well, and the only thing I was going to ask is, we spent, we had six or seven miles on the first phase.
Little over seven miles.
Seven miles, that was about twenty-two thousand. So I just thought if.
That motion shouldn't cover it. You've got thirty-seven, one eighty-five.
And that's what, if y'all comfortable with just saying that the deep patching plus the striping does not exceed three fifty in splice.
Lisa, if you'll add that to the motion?
Yeah, my motion was just for the total project.
Okay, good deal. Any other discussion? Sounds good. We did a vote on that, didn't we?
Yes.
Did you get a vote on it? Item I, Brewery Ordinance Modification for Wine Ridge. Brandon?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council, and I should have started the meeting by saying, Mr. Pickett apologizes, he had stopped by this morning, and he had some medical issues he wanted to address, and he wasn't sure if he was going to make it to the meeting. He and I had spoken, and there had been an interest from the party to open up a winery slash retailer slash very small operation. In reviewing the brewery ordinance, it does not say anything about the production of wine. And then the farm winery section of the ordinance does not say anything in terms of retail or the point of self consumption. So I'd ask Mr. Pickett, would it be easier if council directed us to move forward looking at modifying the brewery ordinance just to incorporate the winery? And he said that would be the path he would recommend. So rather than to presume that you all even want to do that, I wanted to just ask, is that something that y'all want for us to modify and get back to y'all at the next meeting?
A winery, don't necessarily have to sit on an arm of a hundred acres of grapes necessarily, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, so, council, entertain a motion to allow Brandon to pursue the winery? Brewery ordinance? For the wineries. Somebody give me a motion, however you want to order it.
Make a motion for the allowance for Mr. Douglas and Pickett to move forward, brewery ordinance modification for wineries.
Exactly what I read. Second?
Second.
Motion is second. Give it to Ann. Discussion? Being in all favor, what was your hands? Thank you, council. Item J, Extended Waterline Agreement and Partnership Intersection Highway one oh eight and Upper Bethany. Brandon?
Yes, sir, and at any point, if Mr. Hall or Mr. Mayor, if, I think institutionally, there's been some good precedent, this is a really good thing, that there was a property owner in our service delivery area that had desires of extending about two thousand feet of water line coming at the intersection of one oh eight and Upper Bethany. And basically, the way that in your packet, there's an agreement proposed that there is no risk to the city in so much as this property owner has absorbed the cost of running the line at their own expense. The only thing is, the section of ordinance does allow for the partnership, I call it, but it's recouping construction dollars, meaning that if someone were to tap onto that water line, that section of water line, that we can charge a service fee on top of our water meter fee. So what we had talked with the property owner about would be the first five persons that tap onto the line, there will be a five thousand dollar fee associated with it that would then go back to recouping some of the monies that Ms. Rowe and Mr. Rowe have absorbed. We do know that there is one property owner that has expressed interest, and they most likely will do this, they'll pay the seventeen fifty residential water tap, water meters tap, and the five thousand. Ms. Rowe acknowledges and understands that that may be the only thing that she gets.
Help me out with the location again.
If, right before you get to Henderson Mountain, right there on the left, right in the curve, started right there, on the right-hand side of the road, about, goodness, not even half a mile, a little over.
Going toward the Turkey County line?
Yes, on the right.
Upper Bethany Road.
Okay.
They're doing a lot of remodeling on the house and.
Okay, we have a water line extension policy in place. Did you review it?
That's, I consulted with David, and this agreement is essentially the agreement that's been used, and I just updated it with some of my lingo.
Okay, because we did the A, B, C. The next person that might want to tie in that don't need to pay, they need to pay somebody, you said it's five hundred feet or, how long, how far is it?
Two thousand.
Two thousand feet. So if somebody wants to go five hundred feet down the line, they don't need to be part of the two thousand pass, they can take a benefit, take a portion of that. And you could actually sell a lot of meters earlier if you were to look at the A, B, C pattern, it's the old gas line extension policy. Do you review that?
We answered it, and nobody else wanted to pay nothing. So that's what we decided, five thousand, so if you wanted to pay, you needed to get in, begin with.
That's not the way our policy was in the tax.
I didn't see that policy. The policy I've seen in the ordinance was, it was twenty-five years, it was yours.
Yeah, but to be fair with it, I'm sure as soon as someone puts a water line in, somebody will want to tie into it. So you're going to hit them for five thousand dollars. I believe if you'll look, we approved water line extension policy back when Jim Williams was for the city of Jasper, and it's the old Gatlinian gas line policy.
Y'all didn't put it in the ordinance book.
Might not be in the ordinance book, but it was approved by council. It's the way we did business for all these years, and.
And we did, Mr. Mayor, council, because that the.
How much is the line going to cost? How much they going to pay?
I haven't gotten the item out of the system.
Have you seen it? Two thousand? Two thousand feet, that's about, so eight dollars a foot, ten dollars a foot, maybe?
They agreed about twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand? And you're going to return some of the money to them for the expenditure? Or take it all to the city?
Return what money to them?
They're going to spend twenty-five thousand.
Seventeen fifty would just be the water meter, and five thousand would be the service fee on top, and then back to the Rose for the recouping of the construction costs. Now, anything that, any line that we may run from the end of that line beyond, anyone ties onto that is not part of the recouping, the way that the section reads in terms of.
Well, I'm telling you, going to run into issues with this. The Atlanta Gaslight was a good way of doing it, and whether we had it in ordinances or not, that's a good plan.
And I argued that, I'm just saying that was all early, that we have, Delilah was the one that was in the ordinance book. I didn't know the old gas light.
And we can adjust the numbers in terms of the per ride share, in terms of the foot. That's really just a benefit to the Rose. We can modify the agreement on per ride.
Listen, I just, I just wanted to throw something out there. Entertained a motion from the council.
Make a motion to approve the agreement presented to you.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. Being in all favor, what was your hands? Council, I have next item as executive session. Entertained a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion to go into executive session is second.
Second.
All in favor? Entertained a motion to reconvene? Second, give me a second.
Second.
Discussion, being in all favor, what was your hands? Show it like that on. Thank you, council. Okay, Economic Development Hiring Committee update, Councilman Brock?
So we are in the phase where they have sent out the announcement to the position. They're focusing on economic development specialists, and according to the consultant, approximately six thousand economic development professionals will have access to that. There's been no follow-up on any specific candidates, but there has, they've told us that there is a significant amount of interest in the position, so it's exciting news.
Been at it. Could you say it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, item B, parole Roper Pool Property?
So that continues to be an exciting potential project. It is starting to kind of meld with the economic development strategy that we have. We're looking at grants. We are also talking to the county about some sort of partnership over the next, y'all know that's a three-phase project, and we're looking at partnership with them.
Can you touch on that just for a minute? I've heard rumors and all sorts of stories that the city was going to donate the properties to the county. Is that an option or is that just rumor?
What we're looking at is ways where, the particular grant that we're looking at, we're actually in the pre-application phase. There's a twenty-five percent matching requirement, and so different options for meeting that requirement have been discussed, but no decisions or any final realization of any of that has occurred yet.
I'm sure it hasn't been accounted for with council, but discussion on donating the property to the county has been discussed?
I think there has been some discussion about. I think there has been some discussion about a transfer of that as well, the 25%. But that has been met with fairly mixed reviews. And ultimately, it would be something we'd rather not do.
Right, could we not apply for the grant ourselves and come up with the funding in form of SPOS to do our own property?
Part of, part of Mayor, if I could. The, this is the first year that the Department of Natural Resources has set aside about 40% of state tax, state revenue, state sales tax to create a Georgia Outdoors, Georgia Program. They released this year, everyone knows the recreational trails programs, the RTP, which we're going to staff level to pursue. Mr. Keller with ACC and the county and I have spoken a few weeks back. This opportunity that came out, there's a lot of ecological points that we could get in pre-application. Just to kind of add clarification in terms of why we would want to pursue a joint application with public and private, the public being the county and the city, is for the basis of getting to the application phase. So if we score well enough, October 31 is the deadline for the pre-app. The actual application is due May of 2020. So we would be notified February, March that we were selected to move into the application phase. And they actually doing that with the RTP now, that you have to do a pre-app. So what they're doing is they're weeding out communities and then of the application, plus they have 300 pre-apps and then they select out the 200 and then of that.
Does the city know that they'll reply for that grant?
Both of them, yes, sir.
Okay, well, we already got 400 something thousand dollars invested. And that grant, and that project, because we already own the land that we purchased. And of course, I just, I was just concerned when I heard that you're going to mix county, city funds, et cetera. Surely not, we've been working on this project for a long time and put the property together.
And part of, part of what I would like.
You've given up coverage or paid for already.
What I would like to do is there's a resolution that's required by the governing entity to essentially say that 25% would be matched. And so what I would contend is we would say that pursuant to the passage of SPOS, which there is a component use of parks and recreation of, you know, the amount of 5 million, that we would commit through this resolution in the pre-application that we're committed to 25% on the city's behalf. Now, what the county may pursue, I do think there's value in saying that there's additional property in the Phase Three element that has not been acquired. And that's part of the conversation is they could acquire that property. The city has an effect, already acquired the two or four acres of our property. And so all of this would be matched out if we get beyond the pre-app phase. And so there's no firm commitments in terms of ownership or any sort of IGA or anything at this moment.
Okay.
I'll also say, Mayor, that if we apply for the grant ourselves, that investment that we made in those properties, if they were owned by us when we applied for the grant, we could not use those funds.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
But it's still our investment.
It is, that's what it is.
Dr. Keller, you ready for me?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Actually, the idea of the intergovernment agreement came from me and one of the reasons.
I don't figure that.
I talked, I talked to the grant administrator and asked them if the DDA donated the property back to the city, would that constitute an in-kind donation? Because you're right, the property is worth, and we have an appraisal done. It's in the neighborhood of $375,000 something in that neighborhood. And then that way, it could have been used as a match. And they said, no, you cannot. So what I was trying to do was come up with something to where, and once again, it's going to be turned into a park. So the IGA would still be just an entity between the two. But if the DDA took the property and donated it to that IGA, it would be constituted as an in-kind donation. So you got to use that $375,000 as part of the match for the $3 million.
The opposite of that would be, we'd be losing a heck of an asset on our bottom line and we're about to.
No, sir.
More than $8 million.
You would not lose the asset. The park would still be there. What you would do is put a reverter clause on it that says, this park is only going to be used for this purpose. And we've done this for properties that we've donated to Bartow County, to Cherokee County, and to Fulton County that says, you're, you'll use this property for what we've given it to you for. And if you don't, then we have the right to take it back. So it would be under your purview, but it would just be for the match. We would, you would lose the match if the city wrote, and I'm the one who's writing the grant. And I was writing it for ACC, actually. And you could donate the property to me if you wanted to, but it's still going to be used for the park. And all that money is still going to go to the park. So it's really, it's a paper transfer, Your Honor. Has nothing to do with the ownership of the park. You would not be losing it. You would be actually gaining the $375,000 as a match towards the 25%. And I would like for us to get more than 25% because you get extra points for everything over 25% that you can match.
What kind of number, we're talking about the total cost of the project?
They said between $2 and $5 million when we did the preliminary from CPL. But I think what we're looking for with this one, the maximum they will give us, minimum is $500,000. The maximum is 3 million. So we're going to go for the maximum because this is the first iteration, as Brandon said. This is the first iteration of this grant. And I feel pretty positive that we're going to at least get in line for the second application because the grant really writes itself and asks, do you have a preliminary plan? Which we have. Does it have ecological benefit, which we have? We've got a partnership. And anytime you have these grants written, they love partnerships. So I, and I understand the council's hesitancy to give something of value, but you're not, by doing it this way, you're not giving it up. You're using it as a match. And I wish that, that I would be able to present exactly where this is coming from because this is not, I think it's been misportrayed.
It's really not been portrayed at all, except for a few rumors.
Well, then that's, that's a misportrayal.
Now we get a portrayal.
Okay, and that's what I'd like for you to consider because this makes sense. We've got a partnership, not just the city and the county and me as a 501(c)(3) and the Chamber of Commerce. We've got all sorts of backing behind this. But I wish that you would consider the use of the property as a match because that is, like I say, the first appraisal came in at 375,000. We have to have an MAI. You have to have two appraisals and an MAI is going to come in. And I have a sneaking suspicion that the actual appraisal from the MAI will be higher. And that way, if we get to, say, 32%, then we're going to match, we get extra points. And if you think that, that I'm asking you guys for the money, I'm going to twist the arms of the county as well to put in exactly as much money as you guys put in, even more so.
Okay, I'm just kind of also curious if one of the county was interested in coming to the city work when they have more projects out in the county than they can take care of.
Because of me?
Thought so.
Because I've been pushing it. I like the partnership and I think everyone benefits from this and that's why.
Thank you. And I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. And of course, I'll be leaving in January, so it won't be an issue anyway, except for the tax pay.
We're not going to give anything away, Mayor, without it being to the benefit.
I certainly hope not. I think they scrutinize it. It's a very, very, very transparent project this needs to be and good luck with it.
Well, just, just to make sure, because I do, as I've expressed to Dr. Keller on Friday, I do want to seek the authority with this body to submit whether it is a sole. I would recommend partner with ACC and the county. There is no requirement in the resolution to designate anything other than the commitment in the pre-app that the city is willing to contribute the 25%, which is the minimum required matching. So whether that's an in-kind donation, labor, is it hard cost of money? What would then happen is in the application phase, you have an application resolution that is then required to, if you're selected in the pre-application to submit an application, you don't have to submit the application. If you submit the application, you still have to itemize and detail out how that match of the request, I believe we would be requesting the full 3 million, how that would look in terms of the construction, in-kind labor, the spreadsheet within, and then solidifying arrangements. So it's a summer of 2020 award date. So that's why I want to make sure in terms of process and procedure, this is nearly the pre-app. I would just ask y'all for approval of at least the commitment to go forward with 25%. And then if we get awarded to do the application, there's a whole nother process that goes on for a few months.
Good report. So none of the approvals, then?
Well, I just need, I just need to get some sort of.
I'm not going to call for a motion.
I just, I just need some sort of.
Him call for a motion.
Resolution for the pre-app.
I just called for discussing that. You get into this, you can come up, you can come up with a left field with this thing.
Well, I was, I was thinking back enough of.
Well, pick it back next month. Fair on the agenda, we'll have the time to think about it, not just go help your skeleter with this. It needs, it needs to be processed. And today is October the 7th, I think, 8th. I got two more meetings and please keep me out of this until January. We got time after January.
Well, the pre-app is due.
Your Honor, the pre-app is due on the 31st of October. And, and I'm not sure what Brandon is portraying there, but, but you don't have to agree to any 25%. That's going to be something that I'm going to coddle together.
So you want a motion to a free out for the grant?
If there is any requirement that I have to sign off.
It's not on the agenda tonight.
Was under the Perot Roper.
Oh, okay, so next time, okay. Thanks for the report.
Yes, sir.
Item C, item B, Perot, uh, hell, it's the same thing. Okay.
So that, that was, I was just using this opportunity that if y'all wanted any sort of buy-in for the pre-app, because I would also like to fill out recreational trails, which is, it's in mid-November, so ideally I can come before y'all.
That's through the ARC, isn't it?
It's still through DNR.
Okay.
And that's a pre-app as well.
Okay.
But if y'all wanted to just authorize us to work on these grants and pre-apps. This, this is new, Mayor. I know in your tenure and then even in my tenure of doing grants, they just started doing pre-apps. Used to, you just do an application and the governing body approves a resolution and you either get it or you don't get it. Now they put these, these pre-apps in place.
Does the governor still have to bless this?
There is, this one, because it's new, they've got a board of trustees that is, I think, appointed by the governor or DNR commissioner. It is new. RTP is something I know and that's something that I was going to be seeking anyway.
Make a motion for him to.
We're coming out of the mayor's report with a motion, but that's okay.
With the, with the pre-applications, is what.
As a committee, can we do it? Is that better?
Yeah, we'll come out there, we'll come out of the committee.
Okay, coming out of the Perot Roper Pool Property Committee, I'd like to make a motion that we resolve to commit to 25% matching expenditure on the proposed pre-application grant.
Good second.
Second.
Motion's second, discussion. Ben in all favor, O'Neal Hanks? Thank you. Okay, item C. Pension Plan Modification Committee update. I've got Dr. Proctor and Ann Statham.
So we did find out that there's no obligation to be funded to a certain percentage. Other than that, the committee has not met, although Brandon does have a date by which GMA is going to have us up.
They've committed, GMA has committed to giving the delivery date of the proposed modified version by October 23rd. I said I needed it in advance in the November, which is nearly two weeks before. So then after the October 3rd delivery date, I give the committee, Mr. Mayor, and then hopefully have a more, I guess, a better update in November.
Okay, so we'll talk about this next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Finance report? Lisa?
Council and Mayor, in your packet, you have a financial report for.
Excuse me, Lisa. Wouldn't you put that next month on a agenda item? Okay. Go, Lisa.
For the month of September, revenues, general fund, we're at 73%. We should be at 75% at this point in time. One of expenditures showing 69%, but as, as always, we're about a month behind. You know, the bills come in the next month. We collected $113,626 in sales tax for the month. And at this point in the year, we have $1,024,646 compared to $942,500 last year.
Is that not lost, lost or lost?
Lost.
Okay.
For SPOS, we collected $87,886. We have a cash balance right now in that fund of $1,528,810. Our upcoming projects, Water and Sewer Fund. We are at this point, 64% of our revenues budgeted to date. And 71%, 72% of our expenditure. And that's, that's all I have. Unless you have questions.
Questions, council? Lonnie Rhodes and other reports?
Mayor, council, met with the DOT, Davidson County Roads Meeting this morning. The project of widening from Wendy's into town is still on the books. They're moving forward with it. They're drawing up a new plan. They're actually going to want to put the right turn lane coming out of County Road there at Bojangles' Wendy's. So they would stem that lane that's there, that a lot of people use as parking lot spaces. So they're, they're looking at that and going to try to put that into the plans.
Be taking part of Bojangles' parking lot?
Yes. Well, it'd be taking the grass and everything right there, the curb.
New way of the curb.
New way of, I don't know about that, that's DOT. But we would have to fire hydrant moved and work on a few things to make our part of it. That's after they get the plans drawn and then they'll tell us what to expect. But we got that. I talked to them about the new signage on the traffic lights. There is no East Turk Street. It's all West Turk Street. So they're going to try to get that corrected. The traffic lights over at Community Bank, there is no Noah Drive. It's all San Miquel, so they're going to try to correct that. And the paving project is moving forward now, so we'll try to get that completed as quick as possible. And also, we got a letter from the DOT, I think Brandon wants to talk about that in just a minute.
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Long. He actually lives in Higgins County and he and I spoke today. And he advised me that there is a list of roads that is needed on system and off system approved. Apparently, whenever they make some sort of changes to speed limit on system, off system, there's no proposed changes to any speed limit because it's adjacent to any state route. GDOT is going to, this week or next week, be installing, signs, the Department of Public Safety and GDOT did a study and from the hospital down toward the crossroads, that is changing from 55 to 65. They said that the, when they did a analysis, that the 85 percentile warranted 65 mile an hour speed limit increase. So with that, we would need to acknowledge that they are doing this. And they would in turn submit to Department of Public Safety an amendment for them to modify our speed detection permit and then allow us to enforce that 65 mile an hour. detection permit and then allow us to enforce that 65 mile an hour speed limit. Higgins County submitted theirs last week, by virtue of them, you know, stills in the county, they have to go through the process as well. I've asked, they said that they are doing a study of some sorts for the Wurler Crossroads 515. I do not yet know what that entails or incorporates. I've got his email address, I'm going to email him so we can keep a dialogue. He said he was the person who actually did the analysis. He lives, I guess, down in Nelson, so he frequents the area. Philadelphia up Antioch, they said 65, but I think it's already 65. I'm not sure if it's actually classified, but the, from Philadelphia to the hospital, that will maintain 55 miles an hour. So, that's not changing. It's just hospital work.
Nothing happened nowhere, you said?
I think it's already from Philadelphia up Antioch, I think it's already 65, but that's what stood out in the actual list on the on-system.
So, you're saying from the hospital to Wurler Crossroads?
Is going to 65. Yes, sir.
How will public be notified if it's just signage?
The signage going up, and today, let me bring this up, because I said I would like to...
Because Canton's going to say...
Yes, sir.
Great, yes, sir.
And I remember hearing about that.
Do you want to get a motion and a vote on that?
I asked him what his expectation was, because there was no sort of date, you'll notice page 4 of 4 says all ordinances, I said this is an ordinance, this is an acknowledgement. I said it would be our contention of the city, and I spoke on behalf of the city, to not raise the mile per hour from 55 to 65. However, I said it's already been done, so we do not have any control over their state route. So, I said, what do you need? He said, well, if you acknowledge it, we'll give, we'll give the Department of Public Safety to go ahead to amend your permit.
Entertained a motion to acknowledge the documents before the traffic will increase 55 miles per hour from, from Hightown Boulevard to...
Wurler Crossroads.
Wurler Crossroads. Is motion to acknowledge? Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? Being in our favor, will be sure, hands? Counsel, I believe you need to say something. So, there aren't things with our figures on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have original, or you want to just start from...
This, they only mail stuff, so this is a bad copy of the original.
With them, others signed in this, anything else, counsel?
There's one other thing, come out of meeting in November, they are going to, excuse me, they're going to let out a bid to resurface 515 from Appalachian Court, that's the first street past Philadelphia Road, all the way to Antioch. So, 515 north and south will be resurfaced. And I know that's concrete, but they said that they can asphalt over it, and it will be asphalt.
Thank you, Lon. Item B, police report.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. Yes, police department for the month of September responded 784 calls from a 911 center, responded 54 motor vehicle accident, issued a total of 149 citations, one DUI, 73 speeding, 3-seat belt, one shoplifting, cigarette driving, 58 miscellaneous violations, forced suspended over road, free possession of marijuana, court secu- police, a total of 85 for grand total of 234, 9 state warrants, reissued for following, 2 simple battery crimes and violence, 1 approval of children, misdemeanor, 1 possession of firearm by Dr. Victor Pell, 3 forgery from the first degree felony, 2 criminal trespass, miscellaneous calls, 232 long calls, 9 disorderly, 9 harassment, 7 trespassing or robbing, 54 suspicious activity, and 21 domestic, investigated 2 burglaries.
Question, counsel?
Thank you.
Steve?
Mayor, counsel. I think I did better on Lundy's report last month than he did. Fourth month of September, the fire department responded to 109 calls. Those were no structural fires inside the city, one outside, one vehicle firing in, one outside, no grass or brush fires in or out, 11 motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, five outside, 4 emergency measures responded in, 31 out, 12 other calls in, 8 out. As of the end of the month, 1,033 calls total. Fire inspection office listed two sets of plans for construction and conducted 21 inspections.
Question, counsel? Steve?
Thank you.
No action before this, counsel, entertain a motion?